I'd like to call this meeting of Red Deer County Council to order. The time is 9:32. I understand we have some issues with our streaming and recording today. I understand these issues are not fixable at this time, so we're going to continue. Today, we have Counselor Moore online. Are you there, Counselor Moore?
Good morning, Matt Wood.
Good morning. So the first item on our agenda is the, of today is the agenda. What is Counselor Holsman?
Good morning, everyone. I would like to move the county council agenda for January 7th, or Januaries, for January 28th as presented, sorry.
Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor?
In favor.
Carried unanimously. Continuing on to the next item will be our minutes from our January 7th meeting. What is your wish? Counselor DePalm?
I would move our minutes from the January 7th council meeting. I didn't see anything in them. They looked fine to me.
Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor?
In favor.
Carried unanimously. Continue on to item number 5.0 in our agenda, which is, I'm sorry, 5.1, Rethink Red Deer 2025 Energy Innovation Fair Funding Request. Good morning, Ms. Badri.
Good morning, council and mayor. Today, I am here to present to you a request for decision. This is to consider a sponsorship request from Rethink Red Deer in the amount of $5,000 for the 2025 Energy Innovation Fair with a request for an ongoing three-year commitment of $5,000 per year, including 2025. As per Policy 4.008, sponsorships and requests for funding, any request over $3,000 is required to be brought to council for consideration. In November 2024, Red Deer County received a request from Rethink Red Deer for the October 18 and 19 2025 Energy Innovation Fair, which is being held at the Red Deer Polytech. Rethink Red Deer was founded in 2007. Today, it functions as a nonprofit society registered in Alberta since 2010 and is governed by a volunteer board of directors. The county's sponsorship guidelines indicate that qualifying organizations must promote projects, services, and/or events that provide value and operate within Red Deer County. Organizations benefiting Red Deer County as well as outlying communities may be considered. The event is being held in Red Deer by a Red Deer-based organization. The Energy Innovation Fair brings together industry experts, entrepreneurs, investors, policymakers, and the public to promote a dialogue on sustainability and clean energy solutions. The interactions foster collaboration and partnership among stakeholders to support the growth of innovation, clean energy solutions in central Alberta and beyond. Visitors will increase hotel stays, restaurant visits, shopping, and other related amenities to tourism. Sponsorships are recognized through the event website logo placement, direct email recognition to the subscriber mail list, site signage, and the event including exhibitor space as part of sponsorship. The Energy Innovation Fair at Rethink Red Deer are dedicated to enhancing the long-term quality of life in Red Deer and surrounding area. They promote citizen-driven leadership through sustainable planning and living in Red Deer region. Their goal is to create a platform that fosters dialogue, education, and collaboration among stakeholders, and to provide a showcase for emerging energy technologies in the field. Rethink Red Deer is seeking federal grant funding, a portion of which will go towards the Energy Innovation Fair. And listed up on the screen there are the 2024 sponsors that were a part of that Innovation Fair last year. So Red Deer County provided a bronze level of sponsorship at $1,000 for the 2024 Energy Innovation Fair in line with their guidelines, and there are four alternate levels of sponsorship, bronze being the thousand, silver being $2,500 level, gold being a $5,000 sponsorship level, and platinum being a $100 sponsorship level. So Rethink Red Deer is requesting a gold level sponsorship at the $5,000 level for the 2025 Energy Innovation Fair. Rethink Red Deer is also requesting an ongoing three-year commitment at $1,000 per year from Red Deer County to help them attain a level of subscription so the ticketed conference operating model can be achieved. Funds for the sponsorship would come from Land and Economic Development sponsorship budget. So the alternates would be to approve the funding request made by Rethink Red Deer for a three-year commitment at the amount $5,000 per year for 2025, 2026, and 2027 for the Energy Innovation Fair, approve an alternate level of funding support for 2025 Energy Innovation Fair, and have Rethink Red Deer return in 2026 to provide an update. Request that council refer this matter to administration for further information or deny the funding request. Our recommendation is to approve the funding request made by Rethink Red Deer for a year commitment in the amount of $5,000 per year for 2025, 2026, and 2027 for the Energy Innovation Fair.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions of administration? Counselor Kennett?
Yeah, thank you. We were at the bronze level last year, $1,000. I see that includes a booth space as well. Did we have people at a booth there for this?
Through the CAO to Counselor Kennett, we did not utilize the booth space last year, but it is an option that we can do. We did not take that opportunity last year to do it, but it is definitely an option that we can do that.
Okay. Next question. Do you have any numbers on how many people attended or anything like that last year?
Through the CAO to Counselor Kennett, we do have numbers. Their estimated number of attendees was 500 for last year.
Okay. Do you have a breakdown of how many would be county or city or not really?
Through the CAO to Counselor Kennett, we do not have a breakdown. No, we don't.
Okay, thank you. Counselor DePalm?
Thanks for the presentation. So I just got a couple questions, I guess. Are they, I didn't see, like, are they asking Innisfail, Penhold, City of Red Deer, all those towns? Or is it just Red Deer County that they're asking?
Through the CAO to Counselor DePalm, the sponsorship would go back again as well to the same sponsors that they requested from last year as well. I do not have a list of the sponsors that have been asked at this point, but there were requests to Innisfail as well as the City of Red Deer. Those were the two municipalities that requested last year. I'm guessing that they will be approached again this year, as well as the sponsors that were requested last year that were up on the slides.
Okay. So do you know if they actually sponsored anything last year then?
They did, yes.
They did? Okay. So I guess my other question would be, I guess, what is the benefit if we do the 5,000 instead of just the $1,000?
Through the CAO to Counselor DePalm, there are the different levels of the sponsorship. So at the end of the report, there are extra benefits to the $5,000. With the bronze, you get the display booth, marketing recognition, and two tickets to the Green Gala Awards. And with the gold sponsorship, you get that as well as corporate profile in the pre-conference emails and social media. You get the right to provide additional signage, verbal recognition during the event, and six tickets to the gala award.
Okay. So our businesses from Red Deer County would go there and that kind of thing? Is that what it's?
The businesses would be invited to attend, yes. Anyone can attend. The tickets would, to the gala award would be, you'd have to purchase those. We would get six tickets for free through the gold sponsorship. We'd get two through the bronze, four through the silver. And it would be our choosing as to how we distributed those.
Okay. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
I'm going to go around. Counselor Holsman?
Just a follow-up on that question. How many businesses from the County of Red Deer actually, are any of them at the fair, like actually got a booth?
Through the CAO to Counselor Holsman, I am not sure how many of our businesses attend. It is open to any of the manufacturers and the businesses through our community and municipality as well as any other municipalities that attend.
I know this is a difficult question, but do you, do you have any idea about how many other nonprofits that we have that we would give $5,000 sponsorship to and commit for three years?
Through the CAO to Counselor Holsman, through the sponsorship funding, as per our policy, we can provide up to $3,000. Anything else needs to come through council. And to this date, as of last year, we have not brought anything to council.
So they're all less than the 5,000, 3,000, thank you.
Correct.
Counselor Masseur. Oh, we have an answer. Sorry, I didn't see that. Mr. Koopmans?
Through the CAO to Counselor Holsman, further to that, just to give you an idea, as Sandy Badri alluded to, our sponsorship cap is $3,000. So anything above, as per policy, it's brought forward to use council. I can tell you, last year, essentially, our funding, we have roughly about $25,000 in sponsorship that we can allocate to other nonprofits. In the last, essentially, the last two or three years, on average, they're about $1,500 each, the sponsorships that we can provide and that we do provide, and it's approximately about 15 different nonprofits.
Thank you. Counselor Masseur.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Interesting. We were at the bronze level for 2024. I don't know if we were participating before that. We had the opportunity for a booth, and we didn't take advantage of it. And now the recommendation is to jump right to five. Can you explain why the recommendation is to jump up if we're not utilizing what we had in the past?
Through the CAO to Counselor Massey, as recently as a week and a half ago, I did approach the applicant with regards to the possibility of having his, the application brought down to the $3,000 threshold. And so the opportunity was that we could process the application through our sponsorship level, through our policy. The applicant chose to bring the application through to council at the full $5,000 level with the three-year commitment. So here we are.
Mr. Koopmans?
A thank you through the CAO to Counselor Massey. With regards to last year providing a booth, I can tell you that the request came in quite late, so it was essentially a capacity issue. We knew it would fall within our funding requirements. We deemed it as, you know what, this is, this is a good nonprofit to support. And further to what Sandy Badri had said, essentially, yes. You know what, we, we have had discussions with the, with the applicant, let them know kind of what the parameters, this is what we can work on and work with. And, and the applicant wishes to, wished to proceed with the $5,000 ask and the three-year commitment.
Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Matt Wood. That was one of my questions, Mr. Koopmans, so thank you for the response. The other question I have is, you know, much as we're all very interested in the evolution of technology and clean energy, this will in no means be negative to our oil and gas industry. Can you let me know, there was that mentioned in the report about oil and gas, new technologies, but it will present those industries positively?
Mr. Koopmans?
Through the CAO to Counselor Moore, I believe it was an attachment to with the, that Sandy had included with, with her report. And it talks about discovering the latest advancements in clean technology, energy efficiency, excuse me, renewable, alternative energy, and innovative oil and gas technology unique to Alberta. So this really does talk about kind of the future of oil and gas, and it doesn't exclude them. It really is promoting that, the new technology and hopefully the new, the new market.
Okay. And just a final question on the recommendation. Even though the applicant chose to bring forward the three years at 5,000, does administration believe this is warranted? Or are we, is it, would it be sufficient for us to remain at the 1,000 as we were last
Mr. Koopmans?
Through the CAO to Counselor Moore, we, as we've explained, these are our parameters, so we're bringing this forward on behalf of the applicant. And, and the applicant is able to ask for anything over $3,000 to council, to yourself as elected officials, to support. It's a bit of a loaded question, to be honest, Counselor Moore, as far as, you know, do we see this long-term? Yes, we do. And I can tell you firsthand, I did attend the gala on, on behalf of Red Deer County last year. And, and we did bring the tickets forward to Ledge Services to disperse if there was any interest with our elected officials. There wasn't, so I attended on our behalf. And, and I can tell you that it was well-received. There was representation from some of our local neighbors, such as Mayor Barclay from the town of Innisfail, and representation there. So yeah, I hope I'm answering your question, but essentially, this is something that we do support, and the level of funding is, we're asking you to decide as our elected officials.
Thank you, Mr. Koopmans, and I apologize if I put you on the spot there.
Counselor Ramsey? No questions? Okay. I'm looking for, looking for a motion then. Counselor DePalm?
So I would make a motion. So I honestly, I would move to approve the $1,000 sponsorship again. I honestly don't think that we need to commit for three years at 5,000. If we didn't take up the booth space last year, I think that we should utilize that maybe this year if we can. And yeah, staying at a bronze level of $1,000 is more than sufficient for me. So I'll move that recommendation, not the five.
Counselor Holsman?
Thank you. Counselor DePalm, I'm just wondering if I could do a friendly amendment to be, alternative B, where it says that we approve $1,000 funding support and make sure that they have an update next year to see where we go from there. Would that be considered a friendly amendment?
Yeah, I can, I have no problem adding that on too. Maybe we can get more information next year. So, okay.
If you would, I would like to support it for the $1,000, but I'd like a report back to see what we actually got for our funding, and then go from there. That's my line of thinking. Thank you.
Counselor Masseur?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And thanks, Counselor DePalm. I thought from 1,000 up to 5,000 in three-year commitment was a pretty big jump. And I don't really want to commit for future councils. So I really like that you want to go for a one-year and add it in that let's add a report back. I was a little disappointed that, you know, there's 500 people showing up, lots of sponsors. When you look at the background, when you look at who's sponsoring, and they got a lot of industry, and they got a lot of sponsorship, and they're going for federal sponsorship. But jeez, what is our role? Our role is to support and to help and kind of get them off the ground, but to jump that big was too far, especially in the first year. I would have maybe jumped up a little bit more, but the motion on the floor right now is 1,000. Let's get a report back. I'm just going to support that all the way. So thank you, Counselor DePalm.
Well, keep going around. Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Matt Wood. Yes, definitely support Counselor DePalm's motion and the amendment. I think, I really would like more information on this, and I'll make sure that I maybe stop by this year so I can have a look myself. But I think it is a bit of a leap, and, you know, money is tight, so I think we, we remain cautious with our $1,000. Thank you.
Counselor Ramsey?
Thank you, Matt Wood. Yeah, certainly glad to see it's not, the motion wasn't for the 5,000, but I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm still struggling with this a little bit. Certainly supportive of, you know, seeing some diversity in our energy sector and attracting investment to Red Deer County, but I'm just really questioning if this is an event, you know, we should be supporting at this level.
Counselor Kennett?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I've, I personally was thinking about the $1,000 level and looking at next year as well on, when we sponsor something at tourism. They have to get back to us with a report before we hand out more money. And at the, at 500 people, I think, you know, $5,000 level, that's a lot of money per person. Where $1,000, and they've got a lot of sponsors, and they're looking at some others. So I think that's more reasonable, and so I will support the amended friendly motion. Thank you.
Okay, so everyone's had a chance to speak with me, and you'll get a chance to close. Counselor DePalm, I'm going to take a look at this. And sometimes you don't invest, you don't gain. And what we're hearing today is our, our Economic Development Department is making, they've actually asked us to approve the 5,000. I don't think they would have asked us to approve the 5,000. We didn't see value. And I think the key, I think the key thing is, is that if you're not in the game, what is, what is $5,000 if we're talking about bringing in a huge business? I mean, land, land one, land one new business coming in, and 5,000 is nothing. We're talking about 500 people. We're talking about 500 possible investors and companies. This is, actually, that's a lot, that's a lot of people. So I see, I see a lot of value. I see a lot of value in this, to be honest. You know, I, and I'm hearing council, you know, saying 5,000 is far too much. But I'm wondering, I'm wondering if we couldn't come to some kind of a compromise here. In my own mind, before anyone spoke at all, you know, I kind of thought, well, you know what, maybe, maybe $2,500 might, might be a good number. And then we got a report back. And you know what? Why don't we try $2,500 for one year? It gives us better exposure. If the idea is to get us the exposure, it gives us larger exposure. And I'm not sure if I would be, to make a motion myself, I'd ask a little advice, Ms. Rodwell. Am I allowed to make a motion? Yes, I am. Okay. I would like to move that we amend the amount to $2,500 with the same report that would come back, and hoping that that would be considered to be friendly. I do see value in this. What's your, you think, Counselor DePalm?
No, I don't think it's friendly. I can't support 2,500 with no information from what we got, what we supported last year. So no, I don't think it's friendly. I stick with my $1,000.
That's fine. We'll go around the table. If anyone wants to speak, I'm going to, and if you choose not to, I'm just going to go around the table. It makes it easiest. Counselor Holsman, you want to make a comment?
Yes, I can't support the 2,500 because I would like to see what value we have.
Thank you. Counselor Masseur?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I was thinking about that number two, just, you know, staff recommendation. When I asked what staff, why it was staff recommendation, they said they were asking for the 5,000 on behalf of the applicant. So to me, that wasn't staff recommendation. And the other point you made was that we got to be at the table in case there's a big business there that wants to come to Red Deer County. No one in this room said we weren't at the table. When I look at the difference between a bronze sponsorship and a silver, we still get a 10 by 10 booth. The only thing really we get is a couple extra tickets to the gala. So we're still there. If the big business that you talk about is potentially going to come, they'll still see us there if we even work the booth. We're still going to be on the sponsorship page. And so everything that we want to achieve as Red Deer County, we're getting under the bronze sponsorship. So I'm not going to support the amendment.
Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Matt Wood. So yes, Counselor Massey just clarified what I was thinking, that it wasn't actually administration's recommendation. They were doing that on behalf of the applicant. So that was, that was the change for me. And yes, I wouldn't support 2,500. I'd like to, us to remain at the 1,000. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Ramsey, Counselor Kennett?
Yeah, I think it's been said, but even looking at a lot of the sponsors, they're all City of Red Deer sponsors and businesses other than Innisfail itself. So I, I don't think 2,500 is appropriate at this time. I think we need more data.
I'm going to withdraw my amendment. Is that legal? Okay, we're back to the original motion. Do you want to close? Counselor DePalm?
Yeah, I can totally support the $1,000, you know, at this time. And if we get more information next year on how it, I guess, benefited Red Deer County, and that would be good to have some more information. So yeah, the $1,000 for this year would be, is good. And then we'll see what the report says for next year.
Okay, we've all had a discussion. All those in favor? Are you in favor, Counselor Moore?
In favor.
All those opposed? Counselor Ramsey's opposed. Motion's been carried. Continuing on, we're out of, we're out of agenda. Oh, we got 5.2, sorry. Election by law amendment. Thank you very much for your report. I'm suspecting that's you, Ms. Rodwell.
Good morning, council. This morning, we'd like council to consider an amendment to election bylaw 2024/27. When administration was preparing the original bylaw, the government of Alberta had not published the updated version of the Local Authorities' Election Act. An error was made in the understanding of an amendment resulting in missing lines resulting in missing language in the bylaw relating to special ballots. Red Deer County is required to provide an application method and time period for special ballot applications to be received. This must be set prior to nomination day, which is September 22, 2025. This bylaw would allow applications for special ballots to be received in writing, by telephone, in person, and by email. Applications would be received from August 1 to election day at 4:30 p.m. I would also like to draw to council's attention, just because you may ask me this question. We are looking at implementing a new bylaw numbering structure. So we are also recommending that this bylaw be renumbered to Bylaw 1,000/2025. That's also why you're seeing a bit of a different bylaw number here, which is Bylaw Number 1,000/2025-A. So we're looking to start changing all of our bylaw numbers into this new system. So we are recommending a renumbering of the original bylaw, and that's why you're seeing a different numbering structure on these bylaws. It is to make for easier filing, quicker processing when we repeal bylaws, because all bylaws will now, all related bylaws will now start with the same four digits. So you see the original bylaw is going to be $1,000, and its amendment is also starting with $1,000, which means that they will all carry consistent numbering. So when we have something like an information request, requesting a certain bylaw, we just pull every bylaw with the same four-digit numbers. And the same thing with our file structure. Instead of having to go through every single year and trying to find all the bylaws that relate back to an original, we just get to look for those first four digits, making our processing a lot faster with bylaws. So today, we are, because this is a fairly inconsequential amendment, we are recommending three readings of this bylaw at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I'm seeing no questions. Okay. I'm looking for a motion. Counselor Ramsey?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Wood. I would move first reading. I did have the question on the numbering, so appreciate the explanation.
Any discussion on the motion? No discussion on the motion? All those in favor, first reading?
In favor.
First reading's been carried unanimously. Counselor Kennett?
I'd move second reading at this time.
Any discussion at second reading? Seeing no discussion. All those in favor?
In favor.
Carried unanimously. Counselor DePaum?
I would move third reading.
Any discussion of third reading at this time?
Correct. Unanimous consent for third.
Seeing no discussion. All those in favor?
In favor.
Carried unanimously. Counselor Holsman?
Final reading.
Need you say it.
Okay, I would move final reading.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
In favor.
Carried unanimously. Okay, I need one more motion. Counselor, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 10:02. All those in favor?
In favor.
Carried unanimously. We'll have a, we'll have a quick break, and we'll come back in, I don't know, 10 minutes, 10:20, 10:13? 10:15? Let's make it 10:15. That works for you at administration level? 10:15, we'll come back for GPC.
We don't do many half-hour counts.
That must be down to our record.
We even had a couple of agenda. It's too bad that these people that were in the audience didn't speak. They would have been thinking all for.
Well, they, they, they've got a delegation, so.